That everyone find a seat and let us start to do the city's business today. So if you would all please sit. May I ask everyone to please sit? Thank you very much. I was told I wasn't talking loud enough. Can you hear me now? This meeting is officially called to order, and as usual, we will start with our chaplain prayer and pledges. So I'm going to ask Chaplain Tyus to please come forward and lead us in both.
Before we begin, I've received permission to make an announcement that concerns this community and outlying communities. Today is the first Sunday, uh, Sunday, first Tuesday of October, and it is traditionally the day that the Police Department, Sheriff's Department, other state agencies sponsor National Night Out. It's an opportunity to meet on a very relaxed, informal basis with law enforcement and other service agencies. I hope you'll take the occasion to do that. There are two locations this year. The first one here is in San Angelo. It's at the San Angelo Farmer's Market Pavilion, and it will be held from 5:30 to 8:30, excuse me, 5:30 to 8:00 P.M. There will be free pizza and some other activities. The second one will be held at Wall. It is, will be at the Wall Brethren Church. It will be from 4:30 to 7:30. Again, free food, door prizes, Shannon helicopter and so on. It's a fun evening, a chance to meet informally with law enforcement and other service agencies. So I hope that you'll stop by. Let's bow as we pray. God, we come before you with gratitude. We thank you for being a God of love who wants what's best for us. You are now with us in this very room. Your grace has brought us safe thus far, and your grace will lead us home. We thank you for the calling you have given to every one of these good stewards of your creation and to love our neighbors as ourselves. I thank you, God, for these servants, our mayor, our city manager and assistants, our city staff, our city council members. I give thanks for the opportunities of service that they have to take on behalf of all of us. We come to this room as complex human beings, carrying burdens, joys, hopes, differences of opinion, but we trust, Lord, that you can hold us together, and your love and peace help us to trust you more. And so we pray that you would be glorified today through the decisions of this council. We pray that we would have the eyes to see how our lives are all connected and how our common good is upheld when we listen and respond to one another in love. We pray for wisdom, for strength, for courage to do what is right and good for all citizens. May we act with love for the common good. May we all be good neighbors, recognizing your image in every person we meet. We thank you again for this council, for the folks gathered here. We pray that this meeting will be the best of our abilities to serve community and to serve you. This we do in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Will you join me now with our pledge to the American flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now our pledge to the Texas flag?
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
We have three proclamations today, so the first one will be Fire Prevention Week. So I know we have individuals in the audience to come forward and receive the first proclamation. Why don't you folks come on around me? And then we'll move back and front. It's a moving target today. The City of San Angelo is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our community. Fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are in the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. Home fires killed more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 360,000 home fires. Roughly three out of five fire deaths happen in homes with either no smoke alarms or with no working smoke alarms. Working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half. Smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safety. San Angelo residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room outside each separate sleeping area and on every level of the home, and residents will make sure their smoke alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. Residents should test smoke alarms at least once a month, and those who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. The City of San Angelo's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. The 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You," serves to remind us of the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, on the behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim October 6th through the 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week, and urge all citizens to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of San Angelo's Fire and Emergency Services.
Good morning. I'm Billy Clemmons. I'm the Fire Marshal in the City of San Angelo. Smoke detectors are very important in your home. Again, like the mayor said, you normally will only have two minutes to get out of your home in a fire. Your smoke alarms will actually go off earlier, then you can actually pick up the smoke in your home, and they'll alert you quicker so you can get out and remain safe. So please check your smoke detectors. Make sure you change out the batteries if the battery operated. Whenever the time changes, that's when you should change your batteries. We've had several fires in the city. When we checked the smoke alarms, the alarms either didn't work because they didn't have the batteries, or they were disconnected. So please do not disconnect your batteries and your, uh, your smoke detectors from the electrical. They could save your life. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is World Habitat Day and Affordable Housing Day. So those who are here to receive this, please come forward. Yeah, there she is. On Monday, October the 7th, 2024, Habitat for Humanity of San Angelo joined with partners around the world in raising awareness, education, immobilizing individuals and communities to act on the current global housing crisis. Habitat for Humanity of San Angelo joins our partners to rededicate ourselves to recognizing the basic right of everyone to adequate shelter. We ask everyone to join us as one global network in communicating the message that every one of us deserves the opportunity for a better future. A safe place to live can remove barriers to opportunity, health, and success for growing families now and for generations to come. Habitat for Humanity began in 1976, starting as a grassroots effort on a community farm in southern Georgia. The Christian Housing Organization has since become the leading global nonprofit, working in more than 1,300 communities throughout the United States and in more than 70 countries. Families and individuals in need of a hand up partner with Habitat for Humanity to build and improve a place they can call home. Habitat homeowners help build their home alongside volunteers and pay an affordable mortgage. Everyone can help families achieve the strength, stability, and self-reliance they need to build better lives for themselves. Locally, Habitat for Humanity, San Angelo's Galilee Community Development Corporation, and the City of San Angelo stand together to help ensure we can all provide affordable housing throughout our community. Through shelter, we empower. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim Monday, October the 7th, 2024, as World Habitat Day and Affordable Housing Day in San Angelo, Texas, and call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. You're on.
Thank you, Mayor Gunter, and the distinguished City Council members. I really appreciate everybody being here, and I really appreciate this proclamation. Bob Solis with the City of San Angelo, Stephanie Hamby with Galilee Community Development Corporation. Affordable housing is very important to our community. Everybody, everybody, I mean, that was the American dream for so long, was to be able to afford a home. Habitat for Humanity takes care of families and helps families who are working, basically working poor. They're people who work every day, they go to work, but they just don't make enough money to, to be able to qualify for a traditional bank loan. So Habitat for Humanity is the bank. We help them purchase their home. We are the bank. It is a 25-year interest-free loan. They have to qualify, just like everybody else, but we will help them and continue to help get people into homes, and hopefully, I'll, one quick story. One of my families came in, paid off their home about six months ago, and their children, they had two children, they raised it in their habitat home, and they were the first generation to get a college degree. And, and that's, that's heartfelt and very, you know, that's what we all want. So please remember affordable housing. It's very important to the City of San Angelo and to our country. Thank you.
Galilee CDC is very excited to partner with Habitat and the City of San Angelo to provide housing for our community. It is so important, as Pam says, that everybody get an opportunity to live in a safe, affordable place. So we're excited and we're very thankful to be able to partner with you guys.
Our next proclamation is for United Way of the Concho Valley. Good morning. "United" starts with U. The mission of the United Way of the Concho Valley is to provide the means by which a cross-section of our community may join in a community-wide effort to provide and deliver health and human services programs which address current needs in a collective and collaborative manner. In 2023, more than 100,000 local Concho Valley residents, with over 67,000 being citizens of San Angelo, benefited from the United Way of the Concho Valley. Contributions through social service agencies that provide emergency food and shelter, day and after-school programs for children, mental health services, substance use treatment and prevention, services for victims of child abuse and domestic violence, homelessness prevention, and outreach, and many other social services. The objective of the United Way of the Concho Valley is to assist in the expansion and development of service programs, promote preventative activities, and foster cooperation among local, state, and national agencies serving the community. The United Way is ready to assist all individuals with whatever needs may arise in the City of San Angelo. The City of San Angelo supports the United Way of the Concho Valley, and we ask that you do the same. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby recognize and applaud United Way of the Concho Valley for its achievement and positive determination to make a difference in our community.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Gunter and City Council. My name is Ashley Ammons, and I am the president and CEO of the United Way of the Concho Valley, and we are always so honored to come and do this each and every year. We have been serving this community for 99 years this year. So we were founded here in San Angelo in 1925, and so next year we'll be celebrating our centennial. This year, our theme is "United Starts With You," and that speaks directly to the people of this community who have allowed us to continue to serve people for 99 years. Over 60, or 67,000 lives were impacted by United Way Community Partners last year, and that is because of the people in this room, that's the people in this community, and that's the people across the Concho Valley. At United Way, we always say we're a hand up, not a handout. We want to provide hope, and right now, we all know that there are a lot of our neighbors are struggling, as we've heard from World Habitat Day, Affordable Housing, but there's a lot of different issues that our neighbors are facing. And it's because of you, whether, no matter how big or how small your contribution, whether it's your treasure or it's your time, the difference that you make in this community makes a huge difference for someone's life. So we are always honored to serve this community, and we are so grateful, and we can't wait to celebrate our centennial with you next year.
Today starts our new public comment process, and so let me just say, if you filled out a card, Heather will call you forward as we move into the public comment section. If you did not fill out a card, you will not be able to come forward and speak at public comment at this point. But issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz's, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Heather, do we have people who have signed up to offer public comment today?
Yes. First, we had Gerardo Patino.
Next.
Okay. Charlotte Anderson.
Charlotte Anderson, Executive Director of Keeps San Angelo Beautiful. It's great to be with you this morning. I want to review a little bit about our tire-to-go event, recap a few details for you. So we had 145 vehicles dropping off tires. We had over 3,100 tires collected, and that would bring us to 29,100 to date. We had 63 volunteers at this event, which is just incredible. I think September is going to be the month, so had a lot of great participation. 221 volunteer hours, 20 different organizations, and a $7,400 value to the city in cleaning up. So real proud of this event. A couple of upcoming events that we have will be the Fall Sweep. That is on the 12th. We already have 33 teams registered. We're getting close to over 500 citizens that will be out cleaning up in our neighborhoods, in the schools, and across San Angelo. Our tree giveaway will be October 31st, so save the date on that. We'll get the details out on the pickup location for that. We do have 200 trees this year and a great variety, so that should be a fantastic event. As well, our America Recycles Day event will be an art contest, and we will get that to all of our students. All the libraries are participating, so they can drop off their artwork to West, North, or Central Branch Library, and we will have judging on America Recycles Day on the 15th. And that's it. So y'all have a great day. Thank you.
Jamal Schumpert.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. My name is Jamal Schumpert, single-member district number three. Today, I'd like to talk to y'all about, I guess, hunger now. I did, the last meeting, you proclaimed ending world hunger now or something. But I wanted to make a suggestion. Maybe we could work with the county to find some land, and also work with San Angelo ISD and Angelo State University to possibly implement a farmer program where you lease out an acre or piece to some of these, I guess, students and actual residents. I would suggest maybe 200 acres and also create a city orchard where you can have a walk path, and people can walk through an orchard. A lot of that has been, I guess, missing with, uh, over history, because there were a lot of orchards in America. But I guess, long story short, I guess to help end hunger now is if you all work together to get the land and the people, and you also put money towards the tools, then people will actually use them, and they can sell it in the farmer's market. And having a robust farmer's market on, especially a Saturday when you have visitors, will attract more visitors and actually keep some visitors. And over time, having that orchard will definitely attract all visitors in, in West Texas. But I think that that farming program, putting some teeth into it, would help end hunger now, in Ton Green County, not in the world. We're just worrying about Ton Green County. Thank you.
And Shane Kelton.
Mayor, Council, Shane Kelton, Executive Director of Public Works. It is my great honor, and, you know, some of y'all know more than others how great an honor and pleasure this is for me to do today, but I want to introduce all of y'all to our new Water Utility Director for the City of San Angelo, Mr. John Kaufman. John comes to us from the Canyon Regional Water Authority and out of New Braunfels, is, was where he was working prior to here, and he has spent a lot of his career up in the Rocky Mountain region, Colorado, Wyoming, Kansas some, working in the municipal water industries in those areas, consulting as well as a consulting engineer. So he brings a wealth of experience to the city, and we are very glad to have him. So just wanted to introduce him.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you very much. I consider it an honor to be here, and I look forward to serving all of the citizens of San Angelo into the future. Thank you.
Mayor, by me as well?
Yes.
I didn't want this day to go by. Today is Teresa James's last day, last city, actually, that's the last day, but last city council meeting, and I just wanted to express my gratitude, my extreme gratitude for the outstanding job that she's done for the City of San Angelo. She's been a pillar. I mean, I'm going to miss looking over to my right and seeing her there on the city council meeting days. Not only that, she's been the consummate professional, an outstanding friend, not just to me, but to all the directors, someone that you could go to and talk to. And again, I think that from that perspective of not just being that friend, but an outstanding city attorney, we're so grateful to you, and we wish you the absolute best in your next stop, and we know you're going to do an outstanding job as well. So Teresa, thank you so much.
I'd like to point out that was not on the agenda. I also want to take a moment to thank everybody who I've worked with here in the City of San Angelo. I know that sometimes one of us gets credit or spotlighted for certain things that have happened here, but the reality is nothing happens here without all of us, from the administrative assistants to the directors, to the managers, to administration, to council. Nothing that we've done in my nine years here has been done alone by anybody. We all work together, and I think that's a very important thing going forward. I'm going to miss so many people here, and I look forward, you know, as I move forward and work in the legislative arena, I understand how important the work that large cities do at the legislature is to cities the size of San Angelo. So I'm going to keep fighting the good fight for San Angelo and other cities our size, and y'all come visit me.
Thank you. Is that the end of public comment? Okay. We will move into our consent agenda. I will ask City Council members if there are items they would like to have pulled for further discussion. I will start with Larry. B. Okay. Karen? Lucy?
No, ma'am.
Harry? Tom? Tommy? May I have a motion then to approve all the items on consent agenda with the exception of item B? So moved by Karen, second?
Second.
Second by Lucy. All those in, uh, public comment concerning any item on the consent agenda with the exception of item B?
Yes. Mr. Schumpert again?
Okay.
I guess I have about three or four comments outside the exception of item B.
And your district is District Three?
Single-member district number three, Jamal Schumpert. I guess how I would, what I would say about the Lake Nazworthy and the gates, do we have a plan for when people lose their ticket? I seen on there that they had the digital ticketing system, digital ticketing checkout. Will we be charging people extra like they do in the city with the, with the gates? Because in the city, it's $3 to get in, but there's sometimes $5 if you lose the ticket. Also, are we ordering extra parts? Because people do drink out there at the lake, and they might hit that arm bar a couple times a night. You don't want to wait on parts. So it'd probably be good to order extra arm parts for that, for that gate. That way, you know, not losing service. And would it be 24-hour assistance, meaning that somebody will go out there and fix the gate if it's broken on our end? I know that it said that they have 24-hour software support, but that's a little different than, you know, actual having physical maintenance out there. And for item D, uh, item D was a little concerning for me because it says that we don't have a low plane and high plane separation, and TCEQ requires us to have a low plane and high plane separation. It served with way of Payco Street. I, I didn't see anything in the notes about us repairing that, and the valve doesn't work? That, that, that is actually pretty crucial. I think that that might be an expensive project. I don't, I don't know, but it's not the end of it, because they said that the water wasn't getting out of the way up the hill to be distributed back down. That, that's, that seems to be a problem. And the TCEQ matter. And then on item, I think it is E. It, it's not as concerning, but it is a little concerning with the friez and nickels being that if we give them the wrong information, then they can't plot it correctly, they can't cartograph it correctly, it won't be diagrammed correctly. And as far as the land revision, that's, that's automatic. That, they'll put that in there. That's a data entry. But on our part, when it comes to actually knowing what's in our sewer system, we do have the technology, not a lot of it. We do have one camera, mobile camera, we can stick in the sewer systems and see which sewer systems we actually do use and which ones we've abandoned. I know this because they use it outside of my sewer system. It's actually a pretty, pretty good, uh, piece of equipment. That will help us correctly and accurately map our, our city, our sewer system at least.
Thank you so much for your comments today. There's some city staff in the back of the room. If you want to get some comments or answers to your statements today, please contact them. Any further public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we will take a vote. Those in favor of approving all items with the exception of item B, please say aye.
Aye.
There are none opposed. That means the motion passes. The consent agenda passes seven to zero. Item B is considered awarding HGAC by contract. Item B is considered awarding HGAC by contract EC07-23 for the purchase of dispatch console furniture and raised flooring for the Public Safety Communications Center to Evans Consoles Incorporated in the amount of $267,301.83 and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Larry, you had comments or questions, so just if you'll wait.
I spoke to the gentleman who is approaching the podium now and he has some concerns about the wording of this.
You're on.
Good morning. My name is John Bellini. I command the Communications Division of the Police Department. And really, the concerns were just that it said furniture. This is really a remodel. The current building was built in 1996, which included the current flooring. So we're almost at 30 years old on that flooring. It's, we cannot replace it anymore. It's time to replace it. The consoles themselves were installed in 2006. Those have a 10 to 12-year lifespan and we have squeezed every penny out of them beyond that lifespan. We're almost at 20 years on those. And this is not a typical desk of what you see in an office. This is what you see in like an air traffic, air traffic control center. These are 24/7 heavy-use equipment that is used to, to make our jobs a little bit easier in the 911 center. Any specific questions?
Thank you very much for the explanation.
No problem.
I think that's it. Larry, would you like to make a motion to approve item B? Is there a second? Second. Second by Lucy. Any public comment concerning this item? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. Those in favor of approving item B, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. The consent agenda in its entirety has been approved seven, zero. We will move into our regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A is considered a resolution to waive the rental fee of $10,000 required to be paid by the Southern Drag Boat Races Boat Race Association for the events at Lake Nazworthy. Carl, you're on.
Yes, and there is additional information that the Southern Drag Boat Association has provided. They will speak to the item and make their case. I'm here to answer any questions related to the city's role with the event. So I'd like to introduce Mr. David Carroll.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here on the behalf of the Southern Drag Boat Association. We held races at Spring Creek in June and September. Boat races have been in San Angelo and Spring Creeks for approximately 20 years, in addition to the second race in September for the last three. So we were asked to pay, excuse me, the boat races itself, the two races in '23, and I have the information from Placer's app to back it up. But they generate approximately $4.9 million brought to the local economy for these two events with 1,600 rooms booked. Our cost for police and standby amlets or EMTs at security of this is $1,827 a day. For the two-day race of $3,655 and the three-day race is $5,082. With a local, with, and then we hire a local security company to protect it at night, to keep the, to, just to protect the gates is additional $640. I've asked to, the city to waive the $10,000 fee for the parks. To be waived for this is what we bring to the economy here. If I can't get it increased, I mean, I'll be forced to raise the tickets pricing, which would probably reduce the amount of people that I got coming. But in, with that said, it would reduce the logistics of what I have to have there as well. So anyway, with that said, that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Are there questions from council? Tom?
How many peoples do you bring in? I mean, I was on the phone with Steve Walls this morning on the way in. I said, you know, I get it, you're asking for, but there's some things we have to worry about here that set precedence for how we deal with other events that are coming here.
It's about 3,500 between racers, crews, and fans.
All right. How many of those buy tickets? So I'll use comparing. There's other events that use facilities and we charge a fee for. And they have to pay a fee, a rental fee to use.
Absolutely. So the racers typically, between the racers, crews, about 1,000. And then I have about, I use local charities and stuff like that. And we donate to them to help us with the logistics of it, to do that. But the fans is usually about between, and most of them come from out of town. I mean, there's a lot of local people here, but I mean, we're about 1,000 for staff and so we got 2,500 people coming to it.
Right. So is there a cost, something with this year? Because you've paid it previous years, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. And is there a cost that has suddenly, an unexpected cost that's coming this year?
Well, it's just the cost of hotels and everything has gone up and just, I mean, my rooms itself, for my staff, I've got 40 rooms booked through the week, you know, to keep, keep it here. I've got six RVs here that we got spots rented for and it's just the logistics of pulling it off. It's, I've got to figure out. We want the fans there.
Right.
Okay, because it's, it's good. I mean, we like, we don't like to run. If we did, we'd just build our own lake and do it there. But it's like, we love this place. It's, I mean, it's, it's actually the best place we get to race because of the logistics, the way it's laid out. The facility's awesome. When I, the first time I come to council here, it was about even racing there after Lucas had pulled out. And not only have we regained the respect in the, in the, from Spring Creek Marine, but we partnered with them and they've, and brought in that second race. And I mean, you know, and just, and worked with those guys to do that there and the logistics and working with those people. And it's just, I mean, it's something we do and we want to continue to do.
Right. Where I'm going with this, it's pretty short notice to hit this and it's, it's in our budget and it's in the civic events. We understand that.
Yes, sir.
I was talking to Mr. Walls this morning. I said, there's some headwind with this, this year. I mean, there's certainly nothing that we couldn't talk about in future events, but to come up with this one this short of notice this quick kind of throws up some flags in how we work this with other people.
In my application, when I turned it in this year, it had asked for this to be waived at that time. And that was back in January.
Okay. And you may have certainly, I did not see that at that time, but this is the first time we've seen it.
Understood, sir.
That's my question.
Harry?
Yeah. My question really would be for Carl. Carl? Carl? So what is the cost of the city outside of the security that they're, they're paying for? They're paying for the police officers and the paramedics, but what's that cost for us to open it up, clean up, do whatever we have to do?
It's the same service we would normally provide, but we provide it before and after the event. They take care of the property during the week that they rent it, but we do provide services, the mowing, the trimming before the event, clean up the trash, take the trash out of the trash cans, and then do minimum cleanup afterwards because they do a really good job of cleaning it up. So that's not a new cost. It's just scheduled. That service is scheduled before the event. Originally, where this, this fee came from was lost revenue to the gates. Now, since there's two events, the second event is in later in September, so it's not during the time when we charge for the gates. So there's no lost revenue there, but there is lost revenue because they take the gates for the week that they rent it. And historically, that figure, it fluctuates depending, depending on the weather, how hot it is, folks coming to the gates. We do lose revenue for that week and it.
What kind of revenue?
About $6,000 to $8,000 for that weekend, but it depends on different factors.
Well, that was a question I had is, you know, we're, we're thinking about waiving this fee and it's costing the city whatever that, that number is. So I'm willing to work with the Southern Drag Boat Association, but I'm not willing to, to cost the city and taxpayers any money.
And just for clarification, the, the money that's generated at the gates goes into the revenue bucket that pays for the maintenance of all the lake parks.
Yes, but it's still tax dollars.
Yes.
Other questions?
Just a comment, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Tommy.
It bothers me that you don't want to increase your ticket prices. I understand wanting, everything goes up. We know that. So it bothers me that you are unwilling to increase your ticket prices and yet you want us to waive the fee. That's, that's.
What is the ticket price, may I ask?
It's $30.
A person or per day?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
A person.
And it's.
Is that, is that for the entire event or is that per, per time they come into?
Per day.
Per day?
Yes, sir. And, and you know, we logistically set these races, we race after Father's Day weekend, but before the Fourth of July, which is a lighter weekend. I'm actually on a board in Marble Falls for Lake Fest Committee and we strateg, we do these. We don't want to fill the motels completely up. We want, or have people going elsewhere to stay. So when we schedule the June race, it was always scheduled, not on the Father's Day weekend, but after it, but before the Fourth of July to logistically come in at a time when there's not something here to, to help the economy here. I'm on this, I'm in on the big picture of this and making it work for y'all because if it's not good for y'all, it's not good for me as well.
Yes, Tom?
So David, when you look at ticket sales, I know you say you bring 3,000, 3,500 people. Do all those people buy a ticket?
You know, so the, the racers get crew passes with that. They bring their, like I said, there is several racers that live here, so they do, you mean, you know, like I said, they're not coming in here. They stay in their own home. But the majority of the people that do are coming in, staying at hotels. And so, and they don't all buy tickets. And so, and we do, I bring, you know, I own a construction company. I've built about 3,200-foot fence out there during this event. And we, we put it up around the RV park to protect it. We, like I said, we secure the gate. We have four dumpsters out there. I actually have six meters set out there during this event where I pay to have meters set for power and locations that we need it. I turn it on twice a year. It comes in, it stays on for a couple of weeks and we do that and then we cut it back off when we leave.
Carl, would you, one other question. The work and maintenance that you do on the property prior and after, is it over and above what you would have normally done?
I would say not.
Questions? Karen?
Just a comment, a request that we all keep in mind as we're discussing, that the request from the SDBA is to waive the $10,000 fee forever. Not just this one time.
Thank you.
I am unwilling to, I am unwilling to do that, to waive this in perpetuity.
So is this for the one event or both events?
It's for both events.
So it's $10,000, $5,000 per event?
Well, it was, yes, ma'am. It was, it started out, it was, it was $8,000 and then we added the other one that was after the, the parks are open. And so it went up to 10 is what it is now. Yes, ma'am.
Further questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Or comments? Larry?
Rather than going for the full 10,000, is there any, I don't know, desire to?
Anything helps, you know. Like I said, it's just, it's getting harder to do these events.
I just wonder if there's a compromise position on this.
You know, I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm coming back. I love this place. I want to. I'm not saying that, it's just that logistically, it's just getting harder and harder to pull these off. And it's, you know, I think that we bring a lot here and that's where I stand. So, you know, I'm willing for.
I think this council is a little reluctant to pass something that is forever and ever and ever and ever.
Agree.
And so we don't want to obligate people to future numbers, et cetera. So I think the question is, is there a compromise? Is there a motion of a compromise? Or before I say anything else, I'm going to ask Lucy to add a comment.
I just had a question. What was your revenue for last year? Or what was the financial revenue that?
You know, typically, if I can push an event, and in the sport I'm in, it's hard to do because of the logistics and it takes off. It's a 10-day event for me. If it's a three-day, you know, I knock a day off of that to, to pull it off. And so for me to say that I'm making money at this, I don't, okay?
No, that was really what I wanted to know. What I wanted to know was what was the revenue that the city made last year on this event?
$10,000 is what I paid the city, okay? And in the, in that, I provided everybody with the placer ads.
Yeah, but I didn't want to go through the papers. I want you to tell me the answer.
You know, we've, we know for a fact that the boat races field 1,600 room nights, okay? And using that number with, I mean, and, and working with, you know, and lots of places we work, we get offset where we, where we pay these taxes or they, we pay these fees, but we get offset from compromise from the CDB or whatever. But here, we don't get any of that. We've, we filled out all the applications and we have never, we haven't gotten that, so.
I would have to agree with the people up here stating that we wouldn't want to do this forever and ever. I would rather we negotiate something, you know, that, like you said, any little bit helps.
Absolutely.
Tom?
So David, we, and I've heard from tons of people, when y'all leave, it's, it's very clean. I mean, everybody wants you to come here. Everybody wants you to keep coming here. So another part of this is if, say, the economy comes to a point where you only have one race a year. If we were to do something like this, then what would typically be 5,000 and 5,000 ends up to be in 10,000 for one. I'm willing to, to make a suggestion. It's a suggestion at this point. We would have to divide this on the, I would say, the stipulation that you had two races.
Yes, sir.
And that we might discount it 1,000 and 1,000 just this year for a start. I realize that. And it's 4,000 and 4,000 in the agreement. That way, if you stop one of those two races, we at least aren't giving you the full eight. And go from there, but not in perpetuity. I mean, we'd have to negotiate this every year because things change. We're dealing with topics later today that have, you know, affects 25 years down the line.
Understood.
So, and that's just a simple one. It's a very slight discount, but it would hold it. Brenda, give us some feedback.
Well, what I would say is that we love to use Lake Nazworthy as a draw to this city. We think it's a wonderful asset. I think we want to make sure that we continue to have events at Lake Nazworthy. It's there for a reason, for the enjoyment of citizens and for bringing people into town. We really like events that put heads in beds. That's a key strategic plan for us, of course. And so I look at it and I say, we, we want to encourage people to be here, to participate with us, to bring events to us because we can't always be the organization that brings events to this city. We need people who are leaders in their field or in their hobby or in their passion. And that they bring that enjoyment to the rest of the city. So I appreciate the work and effort that you've put into it. I think we need to find a compromise in dollars, whether it is to start with this year, 5,000 versus a 10,000 and split it between the two. Or to take Tom's recommendation, I'm open. I just want more comments on the dollar amount.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I just want to be clear. We're all talking about the same thing. What we're doing today is reimbursing him the cost for the events that have already occurred. So when this permit comes forward next year, if you want to give him a reduction on that event, you'll need to talk about it again at that time. But this is basically reimbursing him for costs that, for those events that we had already.
Cool. So thanks for the clarification, but I'll, I'll still stick with what we have. It's, there has to be two events and I would discount each one 20% currently. But I, we need more feedback on that.
Well, we've already had the event.
Yeah. Right.
So maybe really what you're talking about is yesterday and the day before, not the future. And so your recommendation is that there be a motion that is made to discount 20% off of the, and he's already had the two events, so you can't, you can't tie that to it because it already happened.
Well, I think we would set a precedent for what we expect for the conversations going forward. And I thank Teresa for the clarity because what we do is, it's going to affect the next council and the council on. We want the drag boats here. We want them to stay. They do a lot upfront to take care of it and prep. I, I get that. We, I come from a history, we put on these events. There's a lot. And when people have not asked for anything, I, I really appreciate that for not coming. And there's a lot of people come with their hand out and really don't provide anything to us. You are bringing in quite a bit of economic impact. So I mean, that's where I'll leave it, Brenda. But I think, I, I see it's going back and giving a discount, but it also sets the precedent for what the future council will do in 25.
I respect your comments, but I still don't have a motion on the floor.
Oh. Does anybody want to make any future comments about this?
All right. So a motion is?
I'll make a motion for a $2,000 discount for this year with what's been provided today.
So is that actually $4,000 or just 2,000 across?
2,000 off of the 10,000, so it's going to be an $8,000 price.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Is there public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, I'll go, Tommy, your vote?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Lucy?
Nay.
Karen?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Brenda? Aye. So the motion passes six to one. Yes, ma'am.
We did have a public comment on this item.
Oh, sorry, I'm going to erase that vote. It never happened.
Jamal Schumpert, SMD four.
Jamal Schumpert, single member district number three. Mayor, I would suggest maybe we should get the money and tickets and maybe he create, like an amateur division for the city of San Angelo and give out trophies using C-dos. I'm not, I'm not sure if he has that.
Do you know what the price of one of those speedboats is?
I'm talking about C-dos, not the speedboats. Speedboats are pretty expensive, but the C-dos range about 10,000 to 20,000 dollars. Using an amateur division with that may bring more attention and actively engage the citizens here. I think that may bring up his numbers, but also if we just-
We want to talk about this specific item, not what might happen tomorrow, the next year, the creative minds of somebody else. Comments concerning this item, please.
Yeah, and if you, if we could get the money back in tickets, I don't think it would hurt him as much as if it was cash. That's what I would say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other, was there any further public comment? With no other further comment, then we will go back and we will take another vote. So I'll start on this end. Larry, have you changed your mind?
No, ma'am. Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Lucy?
Nay.
Harry?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Tommy?
Aye.
Mayor Gunter? Aye. Motion passes seven, I mean, six to one. Thank you very much. The next item is Item B, consider the following. Authorizing a memorandum of agreement with Addison Lee Fluger, Concho Christmas Celebration Incorporated and Downtown San Angelo for the operation of Concho Christmas Celebration and authorizing the city managers to negotiate and execute all related documents. And two, identification of possible approval of funding and funding source to support Concho Christmas Celebration Memorandum of Agreement. Daniel, you're on.
Mayor, this is, let's begin. Mayor, this is an item that we've discussed and we supported as far as working with Concho Christmas. All I'm asking for at this point is just to allow me to move forward and actually complete negotiations with Lee Fluger and Concho Christmas. We've talked, we've already had a draft that went to Mr. Fluger. He sent a draft back to us as well with some changes. I just want to finalize the work that we've been doing at this point and I need that authority to get that done. And also as far as my recommendation for funding would come from the hotel occupancy tax revenues. The dollar amount has not been resolved as far as what's going to be contributed toward this agreement, but I'd like to have that authority to kind of move forward and make and negotiate that contract.
So really what we're doing today is not approving the contract. What we're approving is giving you the ability to negotiate and work out all the details with Addison Lee Fluger on the Concho Christmas Celebration group as well as Downtown San Angelo.
Yes, ma'am. That's what I'm asking for.
And you're asking that we, as part of that, identify hot tax money as the source of revenue to support this event?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Tom?
But that's not the only source of revenue, right? There's sponsorship money, there's other things that are funding the entire thing.
That is correct. So they do have-
Hot tax is just one.
Yes, sir.
Well, hot tax pays for one element of it. There's other sources that pay for other elements of it. So it's not just a single source, it's multiple and multiple issues that it takes to pull off this event.
But on our end, yes, ma'am, but on our end, that part that would be negotiated, there's a couple of components that are in agreement right now, but on our part, the monies that I want to ensure that we actually work with is the hotel occupancy tax monies and that's it.
Then there would still be requirements pulling it off for raising sponsorship money, et cetera, so.
That would be a part of the negotiation.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for Daniel? All right, so then what I would like is for a motion to approve Item B one and two. Is there a motion for approval of Item B one and Item B two?
So move.
We've got a lot of people wanting to be a part of this. So we got a lot of motions and a lot of seconds.
I thought it was Harry.
Yeah. And public comment, please.
No public comment.
No public comment, so we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We will move on to Item C, which is discussion and consideration related to benefit for post-65 retiree Medicare Advantage. And Brian, you are on.
Brian Kendrick, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
Had a few sleepless nights since last Wednesday, so let's, I guess, let's get started. This is related to our Medicare Advantage Plan. It is for all of our retire, city retirees that are eligible over 65 years of age. It covers Medicare Part A, B, and D. It's a good plan. I've had feedback from all of them. The level of this plan is pretty amazing. So there's no co-pay or deductible for medical claims. There's a low co-pay for pharmacy and there's no deductible for pharmacy. The new plan year is scheduled to begin January 1st. And Wednesday of last week at 4:42 PM, we received the renewal package and it came in so much higher than anything we had ever seen related to this. And that's the reason for the kind of putting on the agenda, not late, I mean, we were still within our window to post, but that was the reason it was a little later than it normally would be. The delay was caused by many contributing factors. CMS, that's the government entity, Medicare Advantage implications and mostly related to the 2022 Inflationary Reduction Act impacting Part D for 2025. So there was a three-year delay in that, in that legislation that starts this next January. And that caused these quotes to go up, like I said, like something we've never seen before. The United Healthcare Quote, which is our current provider, was six, was the low quote at 62.69% of an increase. That's $124.75 per member per month. The next closest bid and the only other bid we received was Aetna, 97.49% increase, which would have been 194 per member per month. Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is one of the ones they tried to get to bid and actually asked, please, please bid for this, they declined to submit the bid entirely because of these changes. I thought y'all might be interested, so one of the things that we do, y'all know, we compare our benefits to other municipalities through Texas. And I asked our consultant, Holmes Murphy, to provide us with some information on that. 71%, a little bit less, do not fund a subsidy for any post-65 retiree of the remaining 29.1% of those municipalities that fund a subsidy that averages $141 per month. Our current subsidy is 178.56 per member per month. And that's, those are the details. I can get into the, some of the bullet points, but I'm not the expert related to the Inflationary Reduction Act, but I can kind of hit on some of those bullet points if you want to. I know we have lots of people signed up to make comments, so I would, I would give them preference to let them come up and make their comments.
All right, so I think what we want to start with, Theresa, give us some advice in terms of, because one of the big issues that continually comes up is, was there an ordinance passed? What was the, what happened to create this scenario? And then number two, if I understand it, that past city councils cannot obligate future city councils on any item as it relates to budget proceedings and budget financing. Is that correct or not?
That's correct, and that's not even just in this context. It's all of our contracts have these out clauses that if you guys do not fund something, then it goes away. I mean, that's a Texas constitutional issue called delegation of council authority. So this came to me like Wednesday, so we've all been hustling and there's more, there's more legal research to be done on this particular issue. But what we did find, I think it was back in 2009, there was a discussion at council, but the discussion was under different portions of Medicare than what we fund now. So it's really unclear as to what was actually approved then and what was approved prior to then and who that affects. There's also been some statutory changes we're looking into that have occurred around that same time period that went into effect in June, I believe, of 2009 that could impact this discussion. So I wish I had a really clear legal answer for you, but the waters are very muddy as we see them right now related to this.
All right, so with that being said, what I, what I think we want to do today is, number one, we have passed a budget officially goes into effect today at whatever AM, the meeting goes into effect. So we have a budget that we've all approved and sets the tone for this. Second of all, in that budget, there are dollars allocated for this plan based off of what we knew before we passed the budget. So I would suggest that for sure, we must honor what's already in the budget. That is number one. We approved, we approved that, which based off of the information you're providing is significantly better than most cities do.
About 27% better than the ones who provide a subsidy, 70%. Some of them do not provide subsidies, so it probably puts us in a top 10% benefit. Very competitive.
So with that, we can make a motion to, today, do we need to make a motion today to move this forward?
It's really just, we're looking for direction today.
All right, so I'm going to suggest that we do the following. Number one, approve what we currently have in the budget, so everybody understands where we're at today as budgeted. We're going to listen to public comment, then we will do further research and consideration of issues attached to this and then come back for any further action if we choose to do so. But for today, I think the motion on the floor needs to be to honor what we have currently in the budget in terms of the 178.56, which is still a very, very good subsidy. So with that said, I'll open it to other council comments and then we'll open it up for public comment. Yes, Harry?
Just a real quick question. Since we passed the budget last month, certified it, do we really need to make a motion that recertifies this amount of money today for what's already in the budget?
Well, what I would say is we might not, but I just think for purposes of clarification today, we needed to clarify that whether we need to vote on it or not is, might be a challenge, but I just want to make sure everybody understands that what we're talking about today does not, is not about reducing what's already in a budget, but honoring what's already been approved in the budget. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and today it is just consideration and discussion, so you don't have to take a vote, but Brian really needs some, yeah, needs some direction on, as we move forward, what is it that you want us to do? We would have to bring a budget amendment back, I'm assuming, if we do decide to cover it in its entirety because we have not budgeted for that.
Tom?
I have some questions for Brian. So we look at this, what would the new subsidy be? If the current subsidy is 178.56, what's the new subsidy?
So it's moving up 124.75. If you're asking if you kept it at their same, their same premium now, then it would be the 124.75 plus this 178.56, which 302, 303-ish?
And this is only 10% of what that actually cost the city, right?
I'm sorry?
What percentage does the city pay and what are they paying out of pocket?
This, this would be the amount that, that, that the city would pay.
Okay.
So they would, the city would pay the one, the 303 and the, if you, if you decided to move it up the entire, to subsidize all of the increase and the retirees would continue to pay 2044 for retiree only.
How many employees does this affect?
So it's right around 250 is my best number that I have right now. I can get an actual number if you need me, but I'll need to defer.
You try to look at what we affect that's within here versus what we have, because many of our employees do not get this benefit. All right, this is for a set group that had a discussion that was on, hired before 2000 and we get that.
That's correct.
And it was, trust me, for all of y'all that have sent information into all of us, we have all got your email and discussions. We have heard you very clearly and we have heard from both sides talking about, I'm a taxpayer, my taxes still go up, I'm not frozen at 65, I still have to pay for this benefit, although I don't get this benefit. I've heard that from several people too, but I'm just trying to figure out where this is, but you know, when these people sat down and went to work for us prior to 2000 and some of them still sitting in this room have yet to take this benefit, but will when they do retire. There's a, there's a bit of honor involved, but I love the fact that, Brenda, we're not making a decision today. We're going to sit down and look at it and try to work through this as best we can. All right, with that, if you have some more input, bullet points that we need to see that would be, I was fixing to say, germane to the conversation here, I would suggest you do them now, Brian.
As I see it, and you know, I don't envy the position that you all have to make, but I mean, there's, there's really, y'all have one of three options. You either leave it at the current subsidy and pass on the entire increase to the retirees. That's one option. The second option is you fund the entire increase and keep their premium at the same amount that it is. And the third option is that you find somewhere to meet in the middle, but that's really the only three options that I could, I could see for you.
Well, the issue is-
Like I said, I don't, I don't envy y'all's decision because I know, you know, every year we have so many things competing for the tax dollars. Next year, you're going to have a discussion about refunding eight positions or unfreezing eight positions at PD and so.
Well, furthermore, I think we have to step back and have a lot of conversation because this is just this year. We don't know next year what the number would be. So I think we have to have a very thorough discussion about our policy, our plan, and it's bigger than just this right now. We know that healthcare costs are one of the biggest issues in every family in America today.
That's, that's correct.
It's a major issue. It's whether you're on this plan or another plan, healthcare is expensive. So, yes, ma'am.
Just for clarification, so you mentioned that this one really jumped up 62.69%, which is an absolute shocker to us, right? Typically, how much do, does that go up on an annual basis?
In the last-
Well, there's no typical because this is not typical.
No, no, I understand, but we do have a-
In the last five years, it's, it's probably averaged 2% to 3% in the last five years. The highest ever that Holmes Murphy could remember is 16% in one year, so this is four times the highest that we've ever seen. So there's no, no way we could have anticipated that it was going to come in at this amount. Normally, you know, because it comes in so late, after we're going through the budget process, that's just happens to be the, the way that this, the cycle of this, normally, you know, we kind of deal with it one year in arrears because it's 2% to 3% per year. But this, this with it being 63%, the fund cannot, cannot sustain that amount without some additional funding to it, one way or the other, whether it's through premiums or through your city contributions.
And that's the reason, that's the only reason we're having this discussion right now, because we actually had, in good faith, funded the amount that we felt would cover this, right? And it's just jumped up so much that this is why we're having this discussion at this point.
Right. We've done what we've done as far as I know, going back since we've had this plan.
But repeat what you, okay, repeat what you said other entities have done. So 70.8% do not fund a subsidy for any post-65. The remaining 29.17% that fund is a subsidy, the average of the subsidies is 141 and we are currently at 178.
56, yeah. And that, and that represents 27% better than the ones who provide a subsidy, so.
So this has been a very positive, a very substantial contribution to- So, this has been a very positive, a very substantial contribution to past employees. And that's good.
May I just one other thing? What would be the total cost, let's say the city said, we're going to cover all of it? What would be the difference, sir?
It's going to be roughly 375,000. That's human resources math, but I believe the accounting staff might have a actual dollar, but that's going to be pretty close.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Lucy?
Brian, does this include, educate me here, is this insurance plus supplemental insurance? I mean, it's not separate.
So, after 65, everybody's moved to Medicare, and this supplements, you know, base Medicare. And so, it provides for, like I said, zero out-of-pocket for medical, and that's zero copay and zero deductible. And then for pharmacy, it's zero deductible, but a, but a low copay. And, you know, I want, I want to let everyone know, I threw my door open yesterday, I met with multiple retirees, we had the phones going all day long, and so we, which, you know, we effort to be as transparent as possible. So, I sat down and, and, and met with them and told them exactly what was going on, just presenting the facts as, as we've received them.
All right. Let's, go ahead.
I have another question. So, what you're saying is that their out-of-pocket would be 124.75?
If you passed on the entire increase of the, to the, just the premium side, yes, it would jump up by 124.75 per month.
So, if we paid what we usually paid, their part would be 124?
Plus the 2044 that they currently pay, so it'd be 145 and change.
Close to 150. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Let's open this up to public comment. Can I think, Heather, you have...
No.
Okay. Raise your hand so I know. I can't sense it without knowing.
Yes, no. What is, what is our deadline on this?
So, I had to give them a verbal yesterday, that we were going to move forward with the plan in some form, which is, which is somewhat easy. We're going to move forward with it in some form, so I went ahead and did that, but we really need to know as sooner rather than later if we're going to raise their premium.
Number one...
Because we need to communicate that.
All right. Number one, let's be clear, there's a lot of direction that has to come out of the city attorney's office. So, until we have direction from her, in terms of all of the issues that have been talked about before, the best we can do today is move forward with what's in the budget, because there's too much gray matter and unknowns to move forward in any other way. That's a fact.
I'm just curious, though, what the insurance company wants as a deadline?
Well, January 1 is when this goes into effect.
Is that our deadline, January 1?
That's, that would not be the deadline. We need to communicate, I mean, we need to communicate...
Oh, certainly.
We need to communicate what, as quickly as possible, what their, their premiums are going to be. Hopefully, I can have at least that direction now, if, if we have to locate, or if they have to locate where some partial funding is going to come from, that's, that's really direction that'll have to come back for an approval. But if y'all give me direction related to the premium today, that, we, we can start communicating that. That's sort of where I wanted to, to be, is direction related to what the premium will be, because we have open enrollment coming up just right around the corner. Now, I will, I will throw in a side note, these are not pre-tax contributions, so they are not, you know, usually you're, you're locked in by IRS guidelines related to the pre-tax contributions, that you can't drop off the plan, you know, later. With, with these post-65, you, you can drop off, you know, if you decide that, that's something that you don't want to move forward with at any time.
So, let me also clarify, so currently, any, the existing policy that's there regards to whether someone has worked 10 years, or five years, or 20 years, is it the same benefit for everyone regardless of the number of years served?
No, so this would be for the tier one employees that were hired before 19, before December 31, 1999, or before January 1, 2000. That'd probably be easier to say. And they serve for, I believe it's 20 years and then retire. That, that's this group particularly. There's a few in tier two, but it's, it's...
So, most of the 250 people are tier one?
Yes.
Further questions? Tommy?
Comment, you, you said something, Brian, that, that triggered, this is, this is somewhat of an outlier comment, but I, I think, Jermaine, nonetheless, open enrollment for this plan begins, I assume, October 15?
Pretty soon, yeah.
Okay.
I can probably get you, I can get you a date in a few minutes.
I think that, I think that's...
It's, it's close, yeah.
Okay. Open enrollment also affects individuals over 65 that don't have anything to do with the city of San Angelo...
Yes.
But that are over 65. So, if they wanted to go shop on, get their insurance agent, or just go online and shop for a Medicare Advantage plan, open enrollment, that's an option. They may not want to do that, but that's an option out there where they could get a Medicare Advantage plan that included prescription drug coverage to compare benefits, to compare pricing. So, again, that's an outlier comment, but that, that option still exists too for everyone.
That's, yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'd like to go ahead and open it up for a public comment. I love the people that have been sitting here and going, waiting all morning, so I really want them to have a chance to speak. So, if you'll start with the process.
Okay. Russell Smith, SMD 6.
The other cities don't pay for this, because they made a good salary. Y'all didn't pay this for...
Would you talk into the microphone, dear, please?
I'm Russell Smith, the retired police chief. When they say that 70% don't pay it, it's because they paid salaries, they provided a cost of living, a living wage for the employees. Y'all have paid for over 50 years, the retirement, this premium, because of that. Y'all knew that you weren't paying, and when I say y'all, I'm talking about the previous councils and stuff, but what I've just handed out is the amount of money that people get retired, a bunch of them under $500 a month, that they've had to live on, along with Social Security, from your city, while the other cities got double, because the, the salary is the number one qualifier. Now, y'all's time limit, I'm going to have to move, because, anyway, there's a lot of memos that said that we got it, and, and the whole time I was a policeman, I heard we were going to get it, and everybody that's in here that's here for this, why don't y'all just kind of stand up real quick? I mean, they're concerned, because they work 24 hours a day, seven days a week to get this done, and we don't have the list for the non-police and fire. But, anyway, in 1989, they put out a deal that read, the city, and then there's others, prior to this and after this. The city will continue to carry retirees on the health insurance plan at no cost to them. When a retiree or covered spouse reaches age 65 and obtains Medicare A and B coverage, your coverage will be structured to supplement Medicare benefits, so that you have the same coverage as you had on the regular plan. It was similar in 1992. They have blamed the Inflation Reduction Act, and I can tell you, after reading it, I can't believe that everybody on Medicare hadn't gone nuts, because there's another part of it that's going to hammer people on Medicare. Your retire, your retirees did, and I'm sorry, I got mad about the 70%. I tried to recruit all those years, I'm sorry, I better get going. Okay. Your retirees did what you asked them. Yeah, I had a presentation to give you, but I can't give it, because I didn't have the time. You trusted them to do a job, and they did it, working in those ditches when it was 10 degrees. Anyway, the decision that you make with this involves trust. If you let the retirees down, you will be changing their lives forever. You may say, where are we going to get the money? Where are they? They didn't get it when they worked for you.
Thank you, Russell.
Robert Lloyd, SMD 1.
And Heather, if you could speak louder into the microphone, because it's hard to hear who, what you're saying.
Good morning. Robert Lloyd, single member District 1. I went to work as a police officer here in 1974, making 580 a month, which wasn't bad for me. I was pretty young. One of the reasons I picked San Angelo was because of the benefits. It was, it was kind of strange at my age to think about retirement, holidays, sick days, vacation days, and insurance, but it was in my mind. And we were told, I don't have it on paper, that our health insurance would be taken care of. I have my wife on it, it costs 300 and something dollars a month, put her on it, whatever mine is, 20 bucks a month. It's a very good plan. Like your HR director told us yesterday, it is a Cadillac plan. It's great, we love it, but we need it. And like Russell Smith said, there's a lot of the retirees that aren't making a lot of money. And if they didn't make a lot of money, they're not making a lot of Social Security money either. It's all tied to your income, as you know. So, I just would ask the council and everyone to think about the retirees, try not to, you know, go back on any word that was given to us, you know, and just, just support us. We supported the city, we'd like your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John Rodriguez, SMD 4.
Tony Rodriguez, retired sergeant, police department. Russell and, and Robert have, have told you some numbers, things that they, when they went to work here, they were promised by city councils and city management. Over the years, city management has, has smooth-talked employees, not just police and fire, but every single employee, into saying, yeah, we're going to take care of you. I understand what Teresa says about not being able to, to hold future councils to anything, but it was the right thing, because the employees listened to the management, and they said, okay, we won't, we won't put up a fuss about getting more money, because you're going to take care of us with benefits. A lot of people came here for benefits. Robert just said he did. I did too, because I could find things here that I couldn't find any other police department. It was benefits. I took a pay cut to come here. But I'm, I'm telling you, the employees have given you a lifetime of work, and I understand your, your dilemma in not wanting to absorb all of this money. Perhaps there is a, a solution, there's a, there's a compromise of some sort. But Russell's already told you, some of the employees from a long time ago are making next to nothing in retirement. In the seven years from the time of my retirement, to the time of my wife's retirement from the police department, her retirement went up almost $1,000 over what mine was. I was a sergeant, she was a patrol officer. So, present day, prices and everything have increased, you're doing your best to help the employees with increases in pay, but 45 years ago, some of these people were making nothing, and they have to live on that nothing and the promise that that management under, and that term gave to them about taking care of them in their future lives. Their lives are in your hands. You're going to, you're going to be the ones that say, okay, if we, if we have, if we, the retirees, have to cover this, some of these people are literally going to have to decide whether they want healthcare insurance, or they want to pay bills at home. It can't be that way, folks. It just can't. Do the right thing. Thank you.
John Sparks, SMD 1.
My name is John Sparks. I went to work for the police department in 1974. Me and Robert were in the same class. I worked there for about 29 years. I worked 20 years in narcotics, and I retired as assistant chief for Joe Gibson in 2003. When I went to work, the whole time I worked there, they've already mentioned that we had this deal. We had a, what we felt like was a promise from the city, that we would have our healthcare insurance when we retired. We relied on that. And one thing I would encourage all the council to do is, and I know there's not a lot of time, this is real quick to decide this, but contact people that voted for you, see what they think. Because the last time we did this, is I went around town, and I didn't solicit comments, but people told me what they thought the city ought to do for retirees. San Angelo is kind of a retiree city. I mean, how many people do we know that came back here or retired in San Angelo? How many military people have, you know, been served all over the country and came back to San Angelo? So, I think the citizens of San Angelo have really strong feelings about this too, if you, you can get that input. I mean, and like I said, I know there's not a lot of time. Working for the city, and I worked for the police department, and there was, there's all kinds of departments, but it, it wasn't always easy. I mean, I missed birthday parties, ballgames, I've left my family in restaurants, I've left my family at the mall. Before I came here this morning, I asked my wife, and wives have a special way of remembering stuff. I, I said, how many birthdays in a row did I miss when I was working?
No wives never forget.
She said, I quit counting at nine. Nine birthdays in a row, I, I was either scheduled to work or called out to work. Every time I was called, I went to work. I've gone to work and not come home for three days, and that's, that's just a sad story, but that's what we did. We did it because it was the right thing to do. And I know this is, it was difficult, it was hard, we can't rewind, I can't go back and go to those birthday parties or ballgames and all that stuff and not answer the phone. I've already done my part. I've already paid my part. These other people here have done the same thing. This is hard for the city, you know, where do we get the money? Why don't we bid this where we can know the price before we do the budget? You know, why can't we back that up going forward? But anyway, we did a hard thing, because it was the right thing to do. You need to do a hard thing, because it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebel Dowdell, SMD 6. Ricky Long, SMD 3.
Thank y'all for hearing us. I was on the fire department for 40 years, I'm a former battalion chief. Like others, when I was hired, I took a cut in pay to come to work here. Part of the package given to us was this talk of retiree insurance. It's been questioned as to whether or not it was real. I believe in 1999, when they passed the new ordinance that said it no longer exists, it proved its reality. There are some points I would like to make about what went on back when. We actually made wage concessions for the city at times when we asked for raises. In effect, we prepaid for this benefit. I'm just asking that we find a compromise and a way to minimize the effect now. From another standpoint, as well as it being the right thing to do, think of the people you're going to be hiring in the future to protect your city. Listen to the sincerity in the voices of these people that have stood here this morning, that gave up their time, their families, time away from events, national holidays, to be at a given place to continue the services to the city of San Angelo. Continue, if you can, to find a way to minimize the effects to these people, and keep it as a recruiting possibility for the people you're going to hire in the future. Thank you.
Stephen Wilson, SMD 6.
Mayor, Council, I'm Stephen Wilson. I'm a 30-year-retiree with the police department. You hear these officers talk about, yes... You hear these officers talk about, yes, we were promised this benefit. And I can tell you right now, for what this city pays as police officers, if you keep taking these benefits away, you're not going to be able to hold police officers. You're not going to be able to bring them in to begin with. You need to look at that, and you really need to think about that. And I know that this stuff was promised with other city councils, but believe in it and adhere to it. I guess the question I have, listen to all of this, we're just now getting the rates as of Wednesday of last week. My wife has teacher retirement system, Medicare Advantage plan. Their rates came out the end of July, and her amount was $60 cheaper. So somebody needs to explain to me why we're just now getting the rates. Did somebody drop the ball? I mean, we should have had these rates out a long time ago where we could have further discussions, look at this, and see how we're going to address it. The other question is, if the council decides to do away with the benefit on this, what's the total amount that the city's going to save on this? I hope, and I've seen this in the past with past city council people, I hope you're not looking, well, here's this pot of gold up here, and I've already got it where I want to send it, what I want to do with it. I hope the city council doesn't do that. Now, they were saying earlier, and I didn't get this, what is the total amount the city pays out as far as retiree contributions? Do they give a total amount? Do we have a total amount on that?
Not in terms of total expenditures based off of...
Okay, okay. I hope that the council will have somebody that's retired. I would say Russell Smith is part of a committee. We've had committees like this in the past.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alan Gilbert, SMD 1.
It hasn't started until you talk into that microphone. Yeah.
Alan Gilbert, a little bit, one of my precinct one, Single Member District one. Okay, thank you. Well, I don't have a lot to tell you that you everyone already heard, and boy, these people have really said it really good, except there's one exception. In 1974, I was sitting where you're sitting on the city council. And in 1974, that was part of our promises, all these people and a whole bunch more that can't be here today. That was our promises. I know how hard a job it is and plus 44 years on the bench. They did do without salary increases. I can tell you that as a fact, that they weren't given some salary increases because of this benefit. They have prepaid for it. They prepaid for it, you know, and, Mayor, I don't think you're going to find an ordinance. I don't think you're going to find anything other than the fact of, did it happen? They looked at it in 2008 again very closely, but my big question is, in 2000, roughly 1999, we had to change the policy not to give this benefit, correct? I think we all agree to that. But if there was a policy that we had to change, then that means that was the policy because we wouldn't change it if it wasn't already the policy. So that policy, I assure you, I guarantee you, I give you my word, was in effect in 1974 and 1975 that I served on the city council. Then it was called the city commission. And it was a guarantee to them and became a guarantee to a lot of people hired before the year 2000. And that promise has to be upheld by you. Now, are there going to be changes that are made? Can we make changes? We've got to look at everything. We've got to look at every possibility. Half of these people sitting out here don't make $1,000 a month. Think of that. And if their spouse is on there, then that's not 300, that's 600 they're paying for insurance. I mean, my heart's out. Your heart is. I know every one of y'all, and I know how big your hearts are. I also know how much you care about the city of San Angelo, and this is the people that have brought the city forward to get it to where it is today and the type of raises that they get and the money that they have. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much, Judge Gilbert.
Vicky Porter, SMD 4.
Good morning. First of all, I'd like to tell y'all...
Speak into the microphone, if you would, please.
First, I'd like to tell y'all, it's nice to see all of you again. I'm a little upset over the topic I'm here for because I do fall in the category of those that were made that promise to. I went along with y'all's first change, where I went from not paying to paying. Set well with me because when I took my position September 3 of 1999, I promised y'all I would not jump ship. I would be here at my job. I would do what y'all asked me to do through probation and everything. I did it. Now, all I'm asking is for y'all to do what was promised to me. Each department has a director. My feeling is, y'all are wanting to raise our pay. My feeling, the finance director or whoever's in charge of getting this money set out, should have had that money set aside for these retirees, for the ones that were promised it would be paid for. After that, the adjustments can be made accordingly. I pay the monthly premium now, I think $53 something, which isn't too bad considering all I get. I am on Social Security. I'm on my retirement. I am responsible for a family of four. Money is an important issue. Everyone. Finance director at that time. Finance director.
Talk into the microphone, if you would, please.
Sorry.
Not to the people.
I usually don't have this problem. Michael was the finance director assistant. Roland Howard was the finance director. Jim McDougall was in charge of personnel. If you have any questions, because most of y'all probably don't even know some of these people, but if you have any questions on the promises, unfortunately, they're not here to tell you what they were. But there is nothing wrong with my mind. I most definitely remember what I was told. That's what I would like to say. Please remember what the council, back then, back then, and everyone else promised us. There is an adjustment period, I understand. If you were promised it would be paid for, pay the ones that you said you were going to pay it for. If there's an adjustment after that according to years or whatever, do the adjustment or treat them all the same. I realize finances doesn't allow that because inflation will eat you alive.
Thank you very much. That concludes the comments, public comments, from everyone who signed up previously. Again, today's item was discussion and consideration, and what I believe we as a council would like to do is, we're not going to make a decision today, but what we are going to do is have the city manager, city attorney come back and give us some direction, and we will, as soon as possible, get this on the next agenda for a final decision.
Based on the amount of research, historic research, not only statutory, but also related to each individual who's on the plan, I'm not sure it's going to be possible to bring it back. It'll be Brandon who's bringing it back, so with a little bit of grace to him, I just don't think next is going to be possible.
I didn't say next meeting. I just said as soon as possible. Maybe I did.
Yeah, as soon as possible.
My point was as soon as possible because everyone needs to know.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, we'll move into the closed session, the executive session on the provision of government code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement that Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections. Section A is 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding 2.973 Acres, Lot 4, Block 1, First Replat of Lot 1, Block 1, Section 3, Out of the Crossings. Item B is Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding 72 East Avenue D. And Section 3, I mean, and Item C is Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding 605 Rio Concho Drive and 0 Baker Drive. With that, we will move into executive session, and we will return as soon as we finish with executive session conversation. Yeah, what I'd like to do is read what we're going to talk about in our closed session. Item A. It is officially called back to order at 11:20 a.m. on October 1. We have completed the closed session, of which there are no announcements to be made following our closed session, so we will move into announcements and consideration of future agenda items. Are there any? Then may I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, I say nay. Pass is 6-1.